Get started. My name is Cassie Gerhart. I have the pleasure of serving as the Associate Vice President for Student Affairs and University, and I so appreciate students in particular taking the time to join us this afternoon. It's officially 12:01, I can say afternoon. So to get us started, it is my pleasure to introduce President Armikost, who's going to begin with some opening remarks. So President Armikost, the Zoom room is all yours.
Great, thanks, Cassie. I really appreciate it. And to all the people who have signed in today, thank you for joining us. This intended to be a good information session to have all of your questions answered, and the ones that we don't get to today, we'll make sure that we get to on our frequently asked questions page. So I recognize that these are not the times that you expect at a college, that with COVID and the restrictions that are put on us and the limits that we have naturally to our lives, we know that you're feeling it. And just know that the university is behind you, and really, we want to make sure that your success is at the forefront of what we offer you, but also to make sure that your well-being, both your physical well-being and your mental well-being, your emotional well-being are taken care of. And so you have this whole group in front of you and many others who are here to support you through this. I want you to look out for your friends. Make sure that your friends who are struggling through, they might be infected or in isolation or quarantine, look out for them. Make sure they're doing okay. But also look out for your friends who aren't infected and make sure that they're doing the right things, making the choices that we expect. Keep a safe distance, six feet, right? That's the wingspan. Make sure that they're wearing masks and that you're wearing masks. Wash your hands and pay attention to hygiene. And then, of course, avoid large gatherings. And large gatherings in small areas are not a good thing to participate in. In fact, we expect that you don't. And on campus, we have firm restrictions. We would also expect that you abide by that off-campus as well. And it's all about the safety, the health and safety of each and every one of you, as well as the people that you're connected with, family members, the elderly, people in town, people you don't know, because the connections are real. This virus travels quickly between all of us. More immediate, the most immediate is, we just heard from Dr. Burks, Deborah Burks, from the President's Task Force on Coronavirus. She's asking all college students over this three-day weekend to remain on campus. Do not go home. This is her pledge. Our campus in particular, we're testing at the rate of about 10 to 11%. And we want to make sure that you don't put your families back home in jeopardy or your communities. So it sounds odd that we're saying that our positivity rate is high, and we want you to stay, but we do, in the interest of not spreading the disease beyond the bounds of Grand Forks. We also encourage you, most importantly, get tested. We have three testing events this weekend. We have a testing event that's ongoing right now. There's one tomorrow, and these are all at the HPC. And then there's one on Friday. So take advantage of testing, know what your status is, and then by all means, if you're either a close contact or if you test positive, we need you to take care of yourself. It's tough, we know, but you need to take the actions to make sure that we can contain the spread of the pandemic. Again, if we get to the point where the pandemic spreads beyond our capacity to be able to handle it through the resources, the hotel rooms, the people who are taking care of you, then we have no choice but to take the steps of modifying how we're offering classes by going either partially or fully online, or in the ultimate case is doing what we did in the spring, which is saying we can't handle it anymore, and shutting down the campus and going entirely remote. So we have some gradations of options. We can go online and keep you here. We can go online and send you home. We don't want to do any of those things. We want to make sure that you have the greatest experience, and it's likely a combination of online and in-person educational experiences. So do what you can to do your part to make sure that we achieve that goal. Let's keep the campus open. Do your part, and hold your friends accountable as well to do their part. So with that, I think that's all I have to say. Thank you and welcome. And then let me turn it over to, I think, Cara Hallgren, our Vice President for Student Affairs. I think she's next.
Actually, I'm going to pass it back to Cassie.
Sounds good.
Real-time flubs. I had on my notes, I was supposed to send it to you. Back to Cassie.
That's all right. That's how you all know this is live and not pre-recorded. So that was intentional, just to prove it. So thank you so much, Cara and President Armikost. Students joining us today, if you have questions you want to have us answered, please use the Q and A feature to add those questions. Some of those questions, the colleagues who are with me today may answer through the chat. Others of them will be pulled out to answer in a live broadcast. Regardless, we will take those questions and get them answered and uploaded to an FAQ site, because we value all of your questions and want to get the answers prepared for you. Also, please note that today's session is being recorded, and so as soon as we get a chance to get it transcribed, probably takes us a couple of days, we will also post this. So if you have friends who aren't able to join today, please let them know. Speakers, as I call on you to respond to questions, if you could please introduce yourself by name and your position on campus for the students, I would greatly appreciate it, and I know they would as well. And so students, as we get ready to go into questions, I wanted to let you know, we are going to take some of the live questions that you are submitting, but please know, some students have reached out to different members of today's panel with some early questions that we think are probably ones that many people have. So I'm going to ask my fellow panelists a few of those pre-submitted questions, and then we'll get to some of the other ones that you are submitting live. So to kick us off, President Armikost, you started to address this, but I'm going to come back to you with, I think, one of the questions that is out in the community. There've been some rumors flying, whether on campus, off-campus, in different social circles and amongst students, that UND is preparing to close and transition to remote instruction, and that we may not even return after the Labor Day weekend. Can you address these comments and the things that are being shared?
Yeah, so I heard that rumor, and it's not true. Okay. If you want me to say more, I can, but no, from my opening comments, we're making preparations to keep the health and safety of the campus at the forefront. We have faculty members who are, we've granted them the authority to make a decision about their class and how to best operate it for the duration of the semester. There'll be, there might be individual decisions that professors make to revert to an online or to go to an online setting within their class. But there's no, we're not at that point where we're going to shut down the campus. Our resources are holding. I think we have about 165 hotel rooms being used for quarantine and isolation. We're in a good position with the hotel rooms. We're waiting to see what today's testing results yield in terms of positive cases, but there are no plans to shut down the campus upon the return from the weekend.
Thanks. So rumors are just that, rumors. Thank you for clarifying that. Rosie, I'm going to come to you, and President Armikost stressed the importance of getting tested. So a couple of questions related to testing. One that I hear from students quite a bit is, how often do students need to test for COVID-19 if they've already tested negative, maybe at last week's testing event? So can you just talk about frequency of testing?
Thank you for having me. I'm Rosie from the Pandemic Response Team. I'm in an area under the bleachers. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So as far as how frequently you should be tested, it all depends on your risk factors. If you are staying in your pod of just your immediate people that you're surrounded with and not exposing yourself to other people, then your risk of acquiring the COVID and being, need to be tested is definitely less. If you're out and about, whether it's classes or anyplace else, I take advantage myself of weekly testing, just because I come out to the COVID events here. So there's nothing wrong with being tested weekly. We're providing that on a weekly basis at campus, and I highly encourage you, unless you're holed up in your dorm or your room or your apartment, to come out weekly and be tested.
Rosie, we're going to stand testing a little bit, because there's a few questions coming in. So can you discuss, why do people get tested if they don't have symptoms?
We know that a large percentage, at least 45% of people who test positive for COVID do not have symptoms. We also know that those people are infectious and could be spreading the disease to others. So in our effort to curb the spread of COVID, we're asking all people whether they have symptoms or not to be tested, so that we can isolate those people and do contact tracing and minimize the exposure to others, keeping our community safe.
Rosie, follow-up from the testing. How do students learn if they are a close contact? And then what do they have to do in terms of reporting if they're a close contact, if they live off-campus?
First of all, I'm going to address the reporting. Nobody is required to report, but we do highly encourage self-reporting on the VOG link on the UND website. By taking responsibility to self-report, it helps us identify if there are clusters on campus. It helps us reach out to you with resources, if you need them, to get through the quarantine and isolation period. So we highly encourage for your benefit to self-report on that VOG link. First part of the question was...
How do you even find out your close contact?
Okay. Typically, when you're, when you test positive, or always when you test positive, the North Dakota Health Department will reach out with a phone call to do a case investigation. They'll inform you of your positive test results, and they'll do an investigation to identify who your close contacts are. That would be people that are within six feet of you for a cumulative period of 15 minutes or more. When they identify those close contacts, they will reach out to them and ask them to quarantine for a period of 14 days following their most recent contact with a positive case. So typically, the close contacts are called as soon as possible. The positive cases, as soon as the results are back, within a few hours. The close contacts are usually called as well. Some of that may take longer, depending on the volume of positive cases in our state and the ability to reach out to those people. In some instances, the positive cases have been asked to notify their close contacts pending the phone call from the Health Department, but all should be called.
Great, thanks, Rosie. So next question probably is for a couple of you, and it really is about face coverings and the enforcement of policies that we've put in place. And so Provost Storres, Dr. Hallgren, Chief Plummer, I'm going to kind of take this probably from a couple of different angles. So in terms of face coverings and the classroom expectations, Provost Storres, if students are in classroom environments where they don't feel that those expectations are being forced, what should they do to follow up?
Hi, everyone. My name's Debbie Storres. I'm the Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs. Before I answer that question, Cassie, I just wanted to, on behalf of all the faculty and your deans, thank the students for choosing to study at UND. The other thing I want to remind folks of is the need to be adaptable and flexible to the situation and to communicate. If you have concerns about what's happening in your classroom, please reach out to your faculty. They have dedicated their lives to the study of whatever they're trying to teach you. They want you to be successful. And so I encourage you to reach out to them if you have questions, if you're not sure what's happening in the classroom or where to be at what date and what time, please reach out to your faculty. For the case that you mentioned, Cassie, if somebody is not adhering or implementing the best practices that we've required in the classroom, please reach out to the dean of every college. So every college has an academic dean, and that person is responsible to ensure the health and safety and the educational outcomes of every student in their college. You can find the name of the dean on the college website, or you could reach out to me as provost. And what we'll do is we'll reach out to the faculty to remind them of why those safety measures, including face coverings, are important to implement and to ensure that students and faculty are wearing them.
Dr. Hallgren, would you mind responding to this question in terms of people asking about areas like Wilkerson Commons and the non-classroom areas? And what is enforcement in those spaces in terms of the physical distancing and face covering, or where do students go to follow up?
So as we all know, it's required that people would wear face coverings in public spaces, including Wilkerson Commons. And so I just noticed that in the chat line, there was someone that had raised a question about that. Our Director of Housing, Troy Nolner, is on the Zoom here today with us, and so I know that Troy is taking this information in. One of the things that you would do, I think, is to talk to the person who has oversight for the building. So in Wilkerson Commons, again, it's Troy that's probably the best person to follow up with. But I urge you to follow up, because it's the expectation. We want students to wear face coverings. It's about good public health. We've said that. We know that sometimes it's really hard to confront other people or your friends about not wearing face coverings, but we are trying to do that, and we will do our best to help you with that. So please, again, keep letting us know where you see pockets or spaces on campus where you know that to be an issue.
Chief Plummer, I'm going to ask you, can you just clarify face covering expectations when people are walking outside to and from classes?
So I'm Eric Plummer, Associate Vice President for Public Safety and Chief of Police. So while walking to class outdoors, while you're more than six feet away from others, you do not have to wear a face covering. However, once you enter the building's common spaces, such as hallways, other study areas, you are required to wear the face covering at that point.
Great, thanks. Jen, I'm going to bring this one to you, and I think this is one that might have been sent to you specifically by a student. But the question is, why is UND operating with in-person courses when the website still says we are transitioning to safety level two? Since it says transitioning, it seems to me that we are still in the worst level, which, from what I understand, means all work in school is completed remotely. Just curious if this is going to be updated. So if you could clarify that one?
Sure. So you know, when you look across the country and you look in our state, there's all kinds of gradations of what phase we're in and so on. And we really thought about this extensively and really wanted to try to adopt a reasonably simple one, and that is, the worst state is, you know, let's call it red. And that's when you have widespread, you know, community spread of the virus, and your health system is in trouble, as unfortunately we've seen in many states and cities around the country. And the prudent thing to do is to basically, either for the entire university or large portions of the university, say, okay, we're going remote. And that's basically what happened in the spring, when the virus first came, and we had no idea where we were, what was going on, you know, who had it, who didn't. There was no testing, there was nothing. So that's really where we were before. Now we're in a very different position, where we actually are doing robust testing. We are quarantining and isolating people, which basically helps to stop the spread of the virus. But we are looking carefully, because as anyone can see when they look on our transparent website, we have a lot of cases. And so to say that we're into sort of like the green zone, which is, hey, we can go back to where we were, that's not where we are. But because our systems are holding, we're not in that red zone either. At this point, as you heard from the president, we don't need to be going remote. So we're really in that middle area, and I think that's where we're going to remain for quite a while, unless things get worse and we get overwhelmed, or until there are good therapeutics and a widely available vaccine. Because when you think about it, the activities, think about this from your point of view, the student, or my point of view, the staff member. In this time, until there's good therapeutics and a good vaccine, you're going to have to wear a mask, you're going to have to wash your hands, you're going to have to practice social distancing, you're going to have to avoid large congregant groups. From your perspective as the user of our campus, until there's good therapeutics and a vaccine and/or a vaccine, you're going to be doing all those things. Hence, you're still in that middle cautionary zone, unless, of course, things get worse and we do have to pull the trigger and go remote.
Thanks. Cara, I'm going to send this next question to you. So one of the problems that students are experiencing is the 15-minute time period between courses. Students are finding they don't have enough time to drive back and forth from an off-campus location to a classroom. So just wondering if you've got any suggestions or advice of how to navigate going from your apartment remote or off-campus location to then on-campus in-person?
Sure.
Oh, Cara's going to take that one.
Sorry, sorry. Sure. Hi, everyone. I'm Karen Plum. I'm the Vice Provost for Student Success. We do know that students have a mix of online and on-campus courses, as well as on-campus courses that they sometimes attend online. So we're aware that everybody kind of has that mix going on. We do have spaces on-campus that students can participate in their online courses or work in their online courses on the work that they have in between their on-campus courses. So there are spaces in the library, for example. Columbia Hall is another example, but there are spaces all across campus. So I would encourage you, if you're in that situation where you don't have time to get to an off-campus apartment, for example, in between your courses, to reach out to your advisor. They can get you the link that has every space we've designated across campus for students to be able to use in that in-between time, when you're unsure of where to go or where you can be to work on your course material.
Thanks. Provost Storres, this one's for you. Still, as people navigate the classrooms, the question is, does a student have to attend class if it's face-to-face? Could they just decide to attend remotely?
Well, that's a great question, and this gets me back to what my initial suggestion is, to communicate with your faculty. All faculty have been asked to come up with a plan and explain to students how they're going to manage their on-campus courses. And because we have a need to have fewer students in the classroom at any point in time because of the physical distancing requirement for your safety, oftentimes the plan will be to rotate smaller groups of students on different dates. And so many faculty, not all, but many faculty, will also offer students an option to engage fully remotely. But it will be up to the faculty, and so if your faculty has not provided that as an option, you could certainly have an email conversation with them. It is ultimately up to the faculty, who are trying really hard to accommodate students' needs. So that is often available, but it will be on a case-by-case basis by the faculty. So communicate, ask your faculty member.
So still staying in the academic area, either Provost Storres or Vice Provost Plum, students have some confusion of just organizing their schedules and figuring out when they're supposed to be in class and when they're supposed to be remote. Can you help give some suggestions to how to navigate that, either Debbie or Karen?
Sure, I can help with that one. We, advisors across campus are well aware that students are trying to find the information about how to engage in each course, and we've spent a lot of time working with students one-on-one, going through either the syllabus or the announcements posted in Blackboard. Some faculty have posted in both places, some faculty have it in one or the other. So we've been trying to help students figure out what their individual specific schedule looks like, given how often they're going to be in their on-campus courses and how often they will be remote. So if you're still unsure, not really finding the information clearly, please reach out to your advisor. They'll help walk you through it. And if you have any questions about contacting your faculty, if it's unclear and the advisor can't help you find it either, the advisor will help you compose an email. If you're unsure about, how do I email a faculty member? What do I say? How do I put that in a positive frame, so that I can get a good response from the faculty member? Advisors will help you do that, too. So reach out to them if you have any questions or any concerns.
Thanks. Orland, a couple of questions about dining and maybe Wilkerson Commons. I know Vice President Hallgren discussed follow-up with people if you're in Wilkerson Commons. Can you just address, if people see not compliance with the masks and with physical distancing in the dining rooms, who would follow up with, who would they follow up there, specifically Wilkerson Commons or Squires? Oh, you're still muted, Orland, sorry.
Thanks, appreciate that. This is Orland Rasasim, Director of Dining Services. And if a student is in the dining center and they see that a student is not complying with the face covering, they should just notify one of the dining staff that's working there. And if the dining staff doesn't address it immediately, one of the managers will. We've been pretty diligent about addressing it in the dining centers, as far as the physical distancing and the face coverings.
Great. Orland, a follow-up question with that. I know some students have found the physical distancing that you've put in place in the dining center. So the question is, why can't I sit with my friends in the dining center, but I can if I go downstairs to the lower level of Wilkerson Commons or outside? Are you in a position to address that one for us?
Well, I can say that the dining centers are following the guidelines that are put in place by the university. We're adhering to the six-foot physical distancing, whereas some of the other places that are unmonitored, it's extremely difficult to enforce. So basically, what's going on in the other areas is non-compliance, whereas in the dining centers, we are complying.
And I think, as Dr. Hallgren said, in those situations, to follow up with staff in Wilkerson Commons, and they will get involved to help the students out. Orland, another question related to dining, and so this is, I think, partially suggestions slash questions. So the student notes, as far as dining goes, is it possible to have prepackaged foods, such as small containers of cereal, prepackaged wraps, et cetera, in an open area for students to grab, instead of needing dining center staff to hand them to them? The process of dining has slowed down a ton, and sometimes I don't have six to 15 minutes to wait to hand me a package of cereal before needing to head to class or log into an online class.
You know, that's something that we certainly can evaluate. Our goal was really to minimize the touch points in the dining center, just so that we can eliminate or reduce, I should say, the amount of people touching products. Our real issue with the lines is, you know, especially if we're talking about Wilkerson, is that we're still serving about 75 to 80% of the students through the Wilkerson Dining Center, and only about 20%, 25% through the Squires Dining Center. And we really need students that are living in the Walsh Complex, and a good chunk of them that are living over in the Johnson-Pole Smith Complex, to find the Squires Dining Center, so we can spread out the serving, which will then speed up the lines.
Thanks, Orland. Jen, I'm going to take this question to you. So Vice President Shivers, can you address why student fees have not been adjusted since fall sports have been canceled?
Yeah, thanks. I forgot to introduce myself. I'm Jen Shivers. I'm the Vice President for Finance and Operation, and also the COVID lead person. So you know, it's a great question, and really, it will force me to get into two aspects of student fees. So you have one set of costs, which are really based upon what you use, right? So I enroll in student housing, I pay for that. I do a board plan, I pay for that. And as we've talked about in prior meetings, and as we did last spring, should people, you know, should we go remote and people, you know, leave those areas, then they'll get those dollars refunded on a prorated basis. But there's another set of fees, things like for athletics, things for the Memorial Union, and these are fundamental investments that students make to really better the campus, not only for themselves, but for, I hate to sound corny, future generations of students. So for example, a classic, a really good way to think about it, forget about COVID for a second, is the Memorial Union. Students voted to, you know, have student fees support the construction and operation of the Memorial Union, knowing that at that time, they would never see it. But yet, they felt so committed to our campus and our university that they wanted to make that investment. And so there's a whole series of fees that really relate to these investment type of function, because these are the things that we want, not only for the current year in which it's taking place, but for future years, and in some ways, for future generations. So I think that's a really important concept. And I should also just point out that in the case of athletics, not that it's necessarily anyone's particular problem, other than the university's, the costs don't go away. You do not see us laying off coaches, you do not see us dismissing students. In fact, I think I could make a reasonable argument, there's more high-touch going on right now related to the, you know, taking care of our student athletes than there may even be normally, because of the extraordinary circumstances that we're in. But really, fundamentally, it's about the type of fee that invests in our campus for the long term.
Thanks. Chief Plummer, I'm going to bring this one your way, and it's a question about the COVID dashboard that's online. The student notes, while checking the UND dashboard, I noticed that the total positive cases decreases sometimes. Why is that? An example, yesterday, the website removed over 100 positive cases off the website within an hour of checking. So Eric, can you just speak to changes in the dashboard?
Yep. So if you noted, the first couple of events that we had testing on campus was the week prior to school starting, so around the 18th, 19th, 20th, 21st. Those are 10 days ago. So as cases come in and report as positive, they are listed as positive for 10 days after their diagnosis. After that 10 days, they roll off of that list, because they are no longer positive. So that number is removed from the dashboard automatically. Also for quarantine, if somebody is contacted as a close contact, they are put in the system for 14 days, and then they roll off of that quarantine as well after 14 days.
Thanks. Provost Storres, a question, and we've talked a lot about what would happen, but I think we've got some international students who maybe have some elevated levels of concerns with questions. So could you just address, the student just asked, what happens to international students if the worst happened? I would assume it's, if we would have to change to a remote instruction, could you just speak specifically to our international students and how we would work with them?
Sure. Our international students are an important part of our student community, and so we want to serve and support them, just like we do our domestic students. So should we go online and remote, those students be provided the same support from our staff and faculty to continue their education online? I think this might, the question might be in terms of, can they live on campus? And I'll defer to Dr. Hallgren on this. We accommodated those students in the spring, and I would presume we would continue to accommodate them. Many of them would choose not to go home and to continue to study and stay on campus. But I want to confirm that with Dr. Hallgren's note. Can I turn it over to you, Cara?
Sure, thanks. So yes, we would, last spring, when we moved to remote, our residence halls stayed open. We would anticipate that that would happen again if we choose to go back to a remote status.
Great, thank you. Troy, this is a question for you, relates to students living in our residence halls. If a student living in the residence halls tests positive for COVID, do they have to stay in a hotel or could they go somewhere off-campus to isolate?
Yeah, my name's Troy Noel. I'm Director of Housing and Residence Life here on campus. So students in the residence halls, by the nature of the style of living that they're in, being congregate housing, we are asking that they do relocate to a hotel or work with moving to home or an off-site location out of the residence halls if they are determined to be a close contact or tested positive for COVID-19. And so we have a pretty streamlined process in place where they would work with a campus representative to discuss what their options are, where they're going to complete their quarantine process.
Great, thanks. Dr. Hallgren, kind of related, but if students live off-campus and test positive while their roommates do not, how can we work with those students? So a student lives off-campus, maybe in an apartment, they've tested positive, but their roommate is not positive.
So this is what I now refer to as the hamster wheel of COVID. And so one of the things that I think we've spent a lot of time talking with students about is if you're a positive student, living with other students who most likely, in this case, would be identified as close contacts, that one person who's positive isolates, the other three are quarantining. The challenge is that unless you find a way to do it separately from one another, you risk the idea of the quarantined person also becoming positive. So this is one of those situations where it's probably great to have an honest conversation with your roommates about what's happening. If you need additional support from Student Health Services to talk through about what you might want to do to protect the health and safety of those people in your apartment, that's great. But that's exactly why we have the hotel spaces that we have off-campus. It allows people to go to the off-campus hotels, quarantine and isolate separately from other people so that, again, hopefully, when you're all better, you're able to come back to the hotel or come back to your apartment without risk of infection for one another.
Thank you. Rosie, I'm going to probably do a little bit of rapid fire with you. A few questions related to testing and results. So the first one is, any idea how long free testing events will continue to be held on campus?
Our plan is to continue them at least weekly throughout the semester until we have an adequate supply or vaccine or treatment available. So we're pushing to have it weekly if possible, if we can do that.
Sounds good. Rosie, a follow-up question, too, related to testing. Someone raises the question of if we've seen that people with asthma are more severely affected by COVID?
Have I personally seen that? I can't say that I have. I do know that that is a high-risk diagnosis, and you definitely are at greater risk of having complications from COVID. So we know that scientifically that is true. I haven't seen that. What we have seen, particularly in the past week or so of testing events, is we've seen a higher number of students who are actually symptomatic and sick. I'm not aware of, I can go ahead and say this, I'm not aware of any UND student that has had to be hospitalized, which we're grateful for, but we do know students are symptomatic.
So Rosie, next question, and I feel so proud because you've taught me so much about this. I can answer, but I'm going to go to you as the official. If I have been exposed, so a close contact, but then tested negative, do I still need to quarantine for two weeks?
This is probably one of the greatest areas of misunderstanding that people have voiced. The important thing to know is that when you test, that test is good for one point in time. So you may be negative that day. However, you have the total quarantine period of 14 days following your contact with positive case to become positive. So if I was exposed to somebody on Sunday and I get tested on seven to 10 days later and it's negative, that doesn't give me a free thing, a free pass. I need to complete my 14 days of quarantine because I could still become positive the next day. So the pearl of wisdom here is you cannot test out of quarantine. Much as we would like to, you cannot.
Rosie, if a student suspects they may have had COVID a few months ago, maybe, or in the spring semester, but were never tested, is it too late to check for any antibodies? And what are those timeframes?
It's not too late to test for antibodies, but we just have not found them to be a reliable test. So we are not, at this point, recommending testing for past illness with COVID. It's just not a common practice at this point. So unless you've had a positive test, we are not taking it or assuming that you were positive.
Rosie, related to that, I know some information we're just recently getting. Students who may have been tested positive for COVID 90 days ago, again, they've been led to believe until they've got immunity for 90 days. As some of those 12-week, 90-day markers come up, can you help students understand their expectations going forward?
Sure. We know that we have a presumed immunity, as Cassie mentioned. If you've tested positive for 90 days following that positive test or that illness, what we are knowing now is that the antibodies wane after a certain period of time, and we don't know what level of antibodies or for how long they are protective. So we're assuming the best judgment, the best advice we have from the CDC at this point is 90 days after you've had a positive case of COVID, you go back to being susceptible over again. So if I tested, what would be June 1st, and I was positive, and now I've met my 90 days, if that's the right math, my 90 days of, since my positive test, I now am back to being susceptible. And if I'm exposed to someone, I would be considered a close contact. That make sense?
Yeah, thanks, Rosie. President Armikos, I'm going to give you this question. The question is, why doesn't the university do a two-week closed-down quarantine, go all online to help mitigate the spread as we're seeing some other institutions do?
Yeah, there are certainly a large number of options we could consider. The, I mentioned earlier that faculty members have the choice of moving their individual course to a purely online setting if they feel that there's their own personal safeties somehow jeopardized. But keep in mind all the steps that we've taken in the classroom. We've reduced the density to 30% of what it normally is. We put up Plexiglas shields, we're requiring face coverings. So the classroom is actually, our public health people have said, it appears to be a very safe place to be. And so much of the transmission, we suspect, is happening outside of the classroom. So in terms of going to online, we could, it's really at the, at the preference of the individual faculty member at this point. As far as an overall quarantine, that's something we could do, but we would, we can only do it probably if the State Department of Health gives us the authority to do that. Right now, there's no stay-at-home order ordered by the governor. And so we just have to be very careful that the steps we take are consistent with what the public health officials allow us to do. So again, we're exploring a whole bunch of options to keep, to minimize the risk of transmission on the campus. The most important thing that we can all do are the four things that are outlined upfront. Wear face coverings, wash your hands a lot, keep distance from each other, and avoid large gatherings. That's our, that's the coin of the realm here. Prevent, 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 so keep it up.
Thank you. Chief Plummer, you noted, we're currently using about 165 hotel rooms for quarantine. What is our estimated capacity for the point in which we would be in danger of running out of quarantine or isolation spaces?
So right now, we have a total of 322 rooms available to us for quarantine and isolation. As President Armikos did mention, we're using approximately 165 at this point in time. We have the ability to expand that 322 number if needed. Right now, we are doing, observing this on a status board on a day-to-day basis. And if we feel like we are getting strained or stressed on the quarantine or isolation space locations, that's when we would have conversation with the president and the rest of the executive council on what are alternatives to being able to maintain that level of protection for our community.
Thanks. Dr. Hallgren, a few questions have come in related to Greek life, and I think these are some that maybe you and I will tag team off of. So I'll start with the first one for you. There are students in the fraternities who are sick and quarantined but have not been tested. Should they get tested?
Yes.
Pretty easy one, so yes, get tested.
Yes, and just as a clarification, one of the things that we tell people is, hey, during quarantine, don't go anywhere, right? One of the only things that you can do that's okay during quarantine is go get tested. So wear your face covering, go get tested. Next question.
Next question. Why are statistics on positive cases in Greek life being made public to the university but not those of athletes?
Sure, and you know, that question has come up a lot. And one of the things that we, that we have to try and help people understand is that we recognize that if you wear Greek letters, that, you know, you are attached to that chapter. That chapter, though, at the University of North Dakota, has a physical address. And while students might not see the differentiation between that, in terms of public health, we do. So the reason why, in this case, we've named chapters is because they have a physical address attached to them, a house. And the notification is done for public reasons so as to make people aware of what's happening in the community and so that people can make the decisions that are best for them about whether or not they're engaging in interactions on that property or not. Similar thing, if we had something that happened in a residence hall, it's not specific to the students that it happens to, it's specific to what's happening at that address. And again, we would deal with it in the same way. Whereas with student athletes, they don't share that physical space.
This next question, I don't think you can answer, so I'll take this one. But the question is, how will Recruitment Week or Rush Week be approached, especially for the fraternities, since they have not been asked to go online for recruitment or for rush? I will just say, we are continuing to meet with our fraternity leaders. We're also monitoring the status of their chapter facilities. A number of them are currently, their houses considered quarantine and wouldn't be able to welcome potential members into their facilities. Sorority recruitment will be delivered completely virtually, and we're continuing to monitor situations with the fraternity community. Some more information will be posted on websites as the details for fraternity recruitment are figured out. Dr. Hallgren, next question is also going to come to you. Some different information being shared with students as we get ready for Labor Day weekend. And so the questions are, should our parents visit or not visit, especially this weekend? Should I go home or not go home, especially this weekend? So just the advice about visitors for the three-day weekend and/or going home for the three-day weekend?
Sure, so let me, let me talk about parents coming to Grand Forks. You know, certainly, there is no policy or any state order that says your parents can't come and visit you here in Grand Forks. At the same time, I would urge you to consider what we see are the growing numbers here in Grand Forks. I would be concerned about your parents coming here if there were any underlying health-related issues that might be exacerbated by being here in Grand Forks. I'd be concerned about what ultimately family members might take home to their home communities as a result of being here. Again, not trying to put a damper on what sounds to be a great weekend with your mom and dad, but those are some of the things that we're considering. In terms of students leaving town for the weekend, you heard President Armikos talk about Dr. Burke's plea to us to really have students stay on campus during the long weekend if we can. And so I, again, there's no policy, there's no state order in place, but we are asking students to do that because we think it's a good thing to help mitigate the spread of COVID-19. Again, we know the numbers are rising. Our goal continues to be to keep the campus open, to keep students in the classroom. And in order to do that, we have got to drive the numbers down. The numbers are not moving in the right direction. We all need to be committed to doing everything that we can to drive the numbers down, whether it means staying in place or not doing some things that we might normally do. Because again, all of that means that there's a greater opportunity for public spread of COVID-19, which adds then again to issues and concerns for the health and safety of all of us.
Thanks. So a question about when we get to vaccination. So Cara, I'm going to give this one to you or Rosie. Will we be required to get the?
I know what she's going to ask. I think she just froze. So she's going to ask whether or not, once a vaccine is developed, whether or not we would require students at UND to get that vaccine. So currently, there are a number of vaccines that students are responsible for getting prior to coming to UND. Mumps, Rubella, some of those, I think Chickenpox, maybe. I can't remember the list. But anyway, if there's a vaccine, when there's a vaccine that becomes available, my guess is that there will be talk at the ND US level about whether or not we would require this of students. Again, that hasn't been decided yet, but I would anticipate conversations and decisions in the future. But it's not out of the realm of possibility. I think we just lost our moderator.
She's coming back.
Oh.
She'll be back.
Cara, while we're waiting on Cassie to come back, I kind of want to just make a point about the CARE19 Alert app.
Sure.
It would be very beneficial for students to go ahead and download the CARE19 Alert app. It really assists the North Dakota Department of Health in their contact tracing efforts. And it also allows, it checks your phone several times a day to really notify you if you've had any exposures detected. So if you would, please download that CARE19 Alert app and really work to keep your campus community safe.
I think while we're waiting for Cassie, I'll jump in. I saw a question about what is the COVID end goal? What is the end goal of this? COVID-19 is not going to go away as it is an airborne flu virus. I can try to address that with maybe more uncertainty than certainty. We don't know for sure what the end goal will be. We know that until we have a vaccine that's effective or treatment that is effective, that we need to continue these processes and these prevention measures that we're in. We do hope that the vaccine will have good efficacy. We know that the seasonal flu influenza vaccine does not always give 100% protection. We are hoping for a high rate of effectiveness with the COVID vaccine. We're hoping with a high participation rate, and we're hoping that people will buy into the vaccine and use it. I don't mean monetarily buy into it, but we, we're looking at it as a way to get us all back to a new normal. Normal as we once knew it may never be exactly the same. COVID is likely, as you said, it's an airborne virus, likely here to stay. But as we go into the future, we hope to have more immunity, some herd immunity and some effectiveness with the vaccine or at least being able to treat people when they do have the COVID. I'll turn it back to Cassie, she's back.
Thanks. Sorry, my husband should have paid the mid-COVID last month, that's his fault. Sorry about that, everybody. So Dr. Hallgren, another question I'm going to bring up for related to Greek life. We've got students who are observing what they assume to be or maybe are interpreting as parties going on at fraternities and sororities. And now that there are 15 of them with positive cases, questions about can we restrict those parties? Another question, is there a reason why we just haven't shut the fraternity and sorority community down? Because clearly, this is a recurring issue. Some of them maybe need to be quarantined all semester. So if you could just speak to the follow-up that's been going on in terms of the fraternity and sorority community and some of the accountability measures that have been put in place?
So, thanks, Cassie. So one of the things I want to start with is to kind of maybe debunk some of the rumors. So yes, we have a number of fraternities and sororities that are in quarantine right now. But because of the nature of the houses and the congregate living facilities, all it takes is one positive person in a household to cause the whole house to be in quarantine. Okay? So that doesn't mean, you know, 15 houses and we have maybe, I don't know how many hundreds of people that live in those spaces. Realistically, you could have one positive person in each of those 15 houses that results in the house being quarantined. We already know that some of the cases- being quarantined. We already know that some of the cases that we've been dealing with have not been as a result of students doing things after hours. Rather, it's been a result of people coming to Grand Forks, having already been infected, and their interactions with other people. So again, I, well, I know that there are concerns, not only in the Greek community, but also in those people who live in apartments and private homes outside in Grand Forks. That's not the only way that the virus is being spread. In terms of, you know, shutting down fraternities and sororities, the majority of our Greek chapter houses are actually privately held homes. There are two of the 20 houses that are on land that's owned by the institution, but otherwise, they're private entities. And so while they're registered with UND and the organizations are affiliated with UND, the properties themselves are private. And so again, it looks like they're, they're a university and they're part of the university. They are to an extent, but really, they're private properties. And so it is not about the university going in and shutting anything down. To that end, though, I will also say that we have worked a great deal with our Greek student leaders, as well as our advisors, to help them understand what the expectations of the university are. We've had a lot of cooperation from a couple of very strong chapters in particular, and we really do appreciate that working relationship that we've built with them. We know that, as Cassie says, the Greek experience, when done right, is a great experience. And so we support that, want to protect that. At the same time, we will continue to address issues that we know that are contrary to what we, as an institution, believe should be happening during this period of time.
Thanks. Rosie, another question for you. Are you concerned about students who aren't planning on getting tested, given they might have COVID?
I'm sorry, I think the ice machine just started behind me.
Oh, you're fine. Are you concerned about students that aren't planning on getting tested because they think they might have it? So students who maybe have it and are not planning to get tested, is there concerns about those individuals?
Yep, I hope you can hear me. We do have concerns about that. And our primary responsibility, our response is, you know, we ask you, out of respect for the health of the community and people around you, to please get tested. And we know it's, this is a hard time. This is a bad time, and it's not a good time for anybody to be going through this. We know that when you get tested, you end up isolating for 10 days. You end up having your friends and your acquaintances and people close to you, having to quarantine for 14 days, and you feel bad for them. You feel guilty. However, in the long run, you're protecting a mass group of other people contracting the illness. We know that, you know, as a rule of thumb, the people in the average college age get through the illness with very, very minimal symptoms or illnesses. However, we are responsible for people around us, which includes faculty, staff, students that we don't know that do have high-risk illnesses that are carrying asthma and diabetes and other things like that. Out of respect for the health and the well-being of those around you, we ask you to step forward and be tested. That's our best defense to staying open and to take care of each other. So without a doubt, yes, please be tested.
Rosie, it was mentioned that COVID cases fall off after the 10 days. And again, I think that's the after 10 days of isolation. Does that mean the person no longer has COVID? If I test positive, should I be retested before moving back into the residence halls?
No, we don't recommend being retested after you've tested positive. You're not considered infectious after you've completed that 10 days of isolation. However, you still may have a low level of virus that will be detected if you are tested. So the advice is not to be tested for at least the next 90 days, with the one caveat that if you've recovered and you suddenly, or not suddenly, but you do become very ill again, not saying that they wouldn't test you again, but the, the rule of thumb is to basically not be tested again for 90 days. Do not consider them infectious anymore.
Great. Troy, a question for you. We've talked a little bit about COVID in fraternities and sororities and off-campus. The question is, has there been any COVID spread in the residence halls?
I don't know if I could define if there's been a spread, but I can indicate that there's been individual cases in our residence halls that have been identified, and we've worked with quarantine and isolation. And so, but we haven't identified what I would call maybe a spread that's warranted any further action beyond that.
Great, thanks. Kristi Okerlund, I'm going to take this question to you, and it has nothing to do with COVID. So it's a reminder that students have questions just about campus and maybe not related to COVID. But this is a question of, a student missed the virtual involvement fair that you and your staff ran. So just looking for ways to get involved, and maybe if you can also provide information on opportunities for intermarials this fall.
Happy to, thanks, Cassie. Hi, everyone. My name is Kristi Okerlund, and I serve as Director of Student Involvement and Parent Programs. If you happen to miss the virtual student organization fair, we would be very happy to chat with you one-on-one and help get you connected to student organizations you might be interested in. Our office is located in Wilkerson Commons, Room 103. You're welcome to stop by anytime that we're there. Give us a call at 701-777-4200. We are always happy to help you. And then intermarials, there's quite a variety of opportunities this fall. und.edu/intermarials, and you'll be able to see that registration is open for a wide variety of sporting opportunities. So check that out, and please reach out if you ever have questions.
Thanks, Kristi. Hey, Rosie, one more follow-up, I think, to the isolation. The question is, what if a student still has symptoms after 10 days? Should they then be retested? So can you just discuss symptoms at the end of a 10-day isolation?
I'll answer as best I think I heard you ask the question. The requirement or the criteria to be released from isolation, that's following a positive test, the criteria to meet includes having no fever for 24 hours without fever-reducing medications, at least 10 days since your positive test or since your symptoms started, and also improvement in symptoms. Doesn't mean that your symptoms are gone. It means that your symptoms have improved. We're finding a very lengthy period of time that people may experience the loss of sense of taste or smell. And you may not be 100% at 10 days, but if you're improved, that still meets the criteria. If for some reason you're not improved, or you're still having additional symptoms or worsening symptoms, definitely contact your healthcare provider for further advice.
Thanks, Rosie. As we prepare to wrap up, I'm going to turn it over to President Armacost in just a second for some closing comments. We've, I think, answered the questions that have come in through the Q and As. Certainly, if you have other questions, I would encourage you to reach out to any of the panelists you think could answer those. A couple of reminders I have for you, if you have not yet completed your COVID-19 training in safe colleges, please do so. If you weren't able to pick up your UND branded face coverings last week when people were out on campus, please connect with the Student Involvement Office in Wilkerson Commons, Room 103. And Kristi and her team will get those for you. I will also say, come out and get tested this week. And with that, because I think President Armacost will probably say the same thing, it is always good to give your president the last word. So President Armacost, to close this session, it is all you, sir.
Great, thanks. Just a couple reminders. One, take advantage of testing. Two, don't go home this weekend if you were planning on it. Dr. Burke's, the president's task force chair, says no way, stay home. The third is, do all those things to prevent the spread of this infection. I'll say it one more time. Wash your hands, wear face covering, keep a distance, and avoid large groups. It's that straightforward and that simple. Although, the infection does spread beyond, beyond what you might expect. I've seen a case traced from one person to 41 others. So when you say, I don't want to get my roommate sick, so, or it doesn't really matter, I don't have to come in and report myself, the impact on a large number of others is huge. Take care of yourself, get tested, and when, when you're expected to isolate, do so. What you hopefully heard today was a great sense of this blend of what we can do to enforce. And we have our student, the Code of Student Life. When, when there's violations that relate to COVID that hit that Code of Student Life, we will pursue those. We'll pursue them aggressively and fairly, but it has to be avoided by. But the majority of the actions that we're seeing don't necessarily fall under the Code of Student Life. This is where we have to plead to your good senses to take care of others. The North, the University of North Dakota way is to look out for one another. So do those things, prevent the spread, protect the flock, and let's do this right, and keep each other safe. Have a great week. Stay here for the weekend, and let's get this thing under control.